Again, Cash Markey.
Danny Ferraro, Eagles Ness Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Administrator. And Jim Johnson is excused in a medical appointment.
Next approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
My second. Agenda approved. Minutes from the previous meeting, June 25.
Move to approve the minutes from the previous meeting of June 25.
Support.
Okay, public comment. Welcome to make comment at this time or wait for their agenda item.
Hi, Andrew Mattson, 420, I'm sorry, 107 Superior View in Nagani. I just want to give you an update on 420 Brickyard Road. You know, I was here a few months ago with plans to go there and received approval. In the time it took with changes in, I guess, the political landscape and tariffs, we've kind of halted that project. Pricing kind of increased by over a million dollars for us. So with different tariffs and contractors really unaware of material costs. So that put us in the area of looking for a new property, which is, I think, the next item on the agenda under new business is an application that we can talk about. But we did, I'm sure if you've driven by, we thought it would be best to continue to at least clear the lot. So the house is gone and we're remediating that and planting grass so it'll at least be clean and presentable. But I just wanted to give some background on why I'm back here again, seeking the approval for the 6A item.
Moving on to new business. Special use permit, public hearing number 081325-1. The proposed indoor golf simulator land use on a property located in the Zone Development District at 1665 Commerce Drive, Marquette, Michigan. Parcel tax ID number 520801702820. Subject parcels located in section 17. Applicant Andrew Mattson that we just heard from, U.P. Indoor Golf LLC. Jason?
Thank you. So as Andrew mentioned, the price of business and other things causated him to find a new solution. And he has now proposing to partner with Western View Properties, who is represented by these gentlemen here, we've done a lot of work with over the years. And if you're familiar, this is a fairly newly developed property over the course of the last few years. And there's multiple tenants in the property. I think the westerly or the left side of building now is currently being marketed for lease or sale. And as such, Andrew's proposing to utilize the property for his simulator, so it does fit his needs for now. It maybe allows him to grow his business as it matures. So because the property is located adjacent to the residential land use, which is just to the west here, owned by Doc Peszala, a public hearing is required in order to consider the approval of this. So the only person I heard from was Doc Peszala and he simply just stayed, came in and asked where it was going, didn't have any objections or negative connotations to the proposal. Early on, we've worked with Mr. Grand Champ with the parking scenario and different business hours there, so they do anticipate that they'll have enough parking, adequate parking. The fire departments reviewed the plan with favorable review. This is just the notification ring, so we notified everybody within 303 of the property. And here's the DD zoning. So this is the same zoning that the 420 Brickyard was. So it's a permitted land use by right, but given that it's adjacent to residential land use, a public hearing is involved. And that's why we're here tonight.
This is known as Forestville Crossing?
That's correct.
Okay.
And this is basically the site plan that was approved with a slight revision to the parking on the private drive to the east to allow a little bit more parking. And then this is the interior layout of what's being proposed. So a small concession area, restrooms, some storage, and then the main focus of the space will be, of course, the simulators themselves. So this provides, or would provide Andrew with the opportunity to start a new business that's accretive to our market and also help out the gentleman who built the buildings that need to fill them up and rent them out. So it's, staff is supportive of the project. We didn't have any issues at all. If the building codes department sees the project as, you know, this was built as an office building, so if the category changes in any fire apparatus or fire extinguishers or even a proposed sprinkler system would be involved, you know, that'll come down from the county and they'll address that as it happens. But for now, this is strictly a zoning issue and I'd be happy to answer any questions or the development team is here to address any questions that you might have as well.
Does the applicant want to say anything?
Can you say my name again? Andrew Mattson, 107 Superior View in Nagani. Just that we do have, Jason mentioned parking. Our hours with the dental office next door are kind of opposite one another. We have very limited people during normal business hours and more after. So we do have a parking agreement to utilize additional space towards the east of the parking lot during like his non-standard hours, but there are standard hours. So we do have that together and signed. That agreement's already in place to alleviate any parking issues.
Thank you, Andrew.
Yeah.
Jason, we got a good presentation on this structure where it was going to be located by Brickyard Road, I remember, and pretty thorough discussion. Was there anything different above the interior layout of it now that it's going to be a Forestville Crossing? I mean, you've mentioned perhaps sprinkler systems, whatever, but other than, other than that, is there anything different that would cause you any concern?
No. It's, I think it's right size for the building, but it allows him to get his foot in the door and to establish a business in our community and utilize a space that's currently not utilized. So, you know, from our perspective, it's, it's a building that'll be performing as designed and it'll allow him to grow his business. And should he decide to develop 420 Brickyard with the larger development at some point when he can become successful with this, then he'll have, you know, the groundwork to do that. The benefit to us is that these are nice buildings and regardless of the land use that goes in there, provided that it's allowable in our community and our zoning district, the building looks nice and that's just shy of form-based zoning. Luckily, they develop nice-looking buildings and so whatever land use goes in there, whether it's an office space or a recreational type of use, you know, it's a good-looking building.
And you said there was no written comments?
No, I have not received anything other than Dr. Peszala's in-person visit last week. And we talked about a couple of things, actually.
Because this is going to be occupied and people are hopefully going to take advantage of it, this is going to be more traffic at the intersection of Wright Street and Commerce. I just, and that's not a problem for me. I don't have any problem with that. I could have it, so, but you think that this might lend any impetus to, to having the powers that be do something different with that intersection?
Potentially, but I just think that the hours of operation are off hours, off peak hours for travel. So there may be an additional steady amount of traffic if he's busy, hopefully he is, you know. But that's, you know, the road commission will have to address that at some point. But, you know, even the adjacent neighbors didn't have any concerns about traffic. It was just more about where it was being located and adequate parking, things of that nature. So, I mean, you can see by the driveway, it's separated well from the intersection, probably beyond where it needs to be as far as separating an intersection from, from a commercial driveway. Although this is outside of our access management overlay district, you know, it's above and beyond the normal separation for a commercial driveway. So that, that helps. There's good site distance there. I drive by, I drive by usually once a day, come in to work different ways, but yeah, I don't see an issue there personally.
Should we open it up to public comment?
Yeah, you can open the public hearing. You had it to 7:10.
7:10. Welcome to make comment. Wait one minute. Can we call it 7:11 now? Looking close to public hearing at 7:11? Planning Commissioners, any other comments, questions?
I think we had a really good overview when you first came in and you were interested over by, I'll be right back. Station, you made a really good presentation. I think it's a great idea that this will work out one for you.
My guess is that people are sitting in those chairs and not really up and around and physically moving. Is that how the golf simulator works?
Yeah, so in those bays, which are about, they're about 18 feet by 20 feet, so almost 400 square feet of open turf space. And it's just one person in there by themselves. And then the other golfers they're with, whether it's a party of three or four, sit behind them. And we build walls there to kind of create a safe space for the golfer to have plenty of room. A typical golf bay is 15 feet wide by 18 deep and we're extending that to 18 feet wide by 20 feet deep. Cause especially when you bring kids in, that's one of the hazards, is to make sure the golfer has plenty of room without anyone behind him or on the sides.
Okay, yeah.
With the smaller seats, will you still offer, like when you talked about it earlier this year, you talked about like family stuff where you run these for kids, like kids could come in and adults could play the next simulator or whatever?
Yeah, so we're still going to have, so we're only reducing by one simulator. We're just kind of condensing the space. I typically like to maybe, you know, I kind of go a little further than I should and the initial plans would have been great had it not been so cost prohibitive. And, but, you know, after speaking, you know, Fred here has been a great help, kind of maybe slowing me down and saying, hey, for three to five years, this is a good spot, you know, and maybe a stepping stone to proving this before I go and do that bigger development. But we'll still have four simulators. Two of them will still have the multi-sport for kids games, soccer, football, there's zombie dodgeball, those things I had previously talked about. And then the other two, but all four sims will be capable of golf, because that is where most of our, most of the members and most of the people that come in are going to play golf. And actually, just yesterday, I met with Ken Ruska, who's just started First Team Marquette County. And we've got some good ideas right now of opening actually early on the weekends for a couple hours so that he can bring the kids in prior to our normal customers and they can continue to do all of their golf stuff, training and, and kind of the life skills that they coach from like eight to 10 in the morning before we open. Yeah, so I think this, and, and, you know, even in the summer, I wish we could get open faster because when they have a rain day, right now they get canceled. And sometimes they're not able to make it up because of how busy the golf course is. So I even told them next summer, if they get rained out, it's a simple phone call to me and we can accommodate them inside. So, yeah, I mean-
Is there a market in your golf league?
So it's, it's called First Team Marquette County. At First Team, it's a national 501(c)(3) nonprofit and he just got a chapter established up here this summer. So he works with the Marquette Youth Golf League and they're kind of going to be combining that into kind of one nonprofit and one, one kind of thing for the kids.
That's great.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll still be able to do everything. We will have less space, but I think we can still accommodate everyone and we'll be able to grow a little bit. And then, you know, it'll be good luck for me if we have to expand in the future. It just means that we're doing well enough to do that. Any other questions?
Anybody want to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion that we approve the special use permit for the proposed indoor golf simulator located on property in the zoned development district at 1665 Commerce Drive, Marquette. I can say the rest of it if you want.
No, you don't need to.
I don't need to, that's probably good, Jason.
I support it. Roll call?
Yep.
Yay.
Yes.
Yes.
And then a yes as well?
You're two for two, Andrew.
I know. You're pushing my luck, huh?
Doing really well, actually.
Or pick a property that's not, not next to a residential house.
Township, thank you for sticking with us and you're working with a good team.
Yeah, thank you.
You can say if you want us to talk about chickens and rabbits and-
Bees.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Yeah.
Moving on to unfinished business. 7/8, limited animal keeping and wetlands ordinance amendments.
So I know that Eric has been working with you on this and I, with him being on paternity leave, have been a little bit slammed in the office because it's August and it's during the construction season, so I've been pretty busy. And I have read through this and I understand the impetus. Of course, we've talked about this over the course of my 14 years here several different times and we've made some adjustments to animal keeping with the allowance by rights in the rural residential district, I believe it is. So I know that he presented some information to you, you guys had some deliberations and conversations and he also included some language from Munising Township with regard to animal keeping and beekeeping and proposed a couple of amendments there on page two of the previous staff report from June. We can get into this as deeply or as shallowly as you would like tonight. And then the other component of this agenda item is the wetlands waterfront zoning amendment discussion, which is a little bit more in-depth. It probably requires a considerable more amount of discussion. But anyway, in any event, happy to open the floor to your thoughts, interpretations, issues, opportunities, as you see fit.
I'm happy to defer discussion on the chickens until Eric comes back. Will he come back with a new baby? Is that-
We're, we're crossing our fingers we haven't heard from him, so I'm assuming yes.
Yeah, so I just have one question on, and I don't know how everybody else feels, but I have one question. At one of our meetings, we voted unanimously to send a letter for Jim Johnson's signature, presumed, to the state legislature legislators who had proposed these two house bills that would preempt our ability to enact such animal keeping ordinances. And my question is, and what was going to be done is it was going to be for Jim's signature and it was going to be presented to the township, see if the township had any input or wanted to author the letter themselves, the board. But I never heard what happened on that.
I was not aware of that. I could check in with Eric if he chooses to respond. He's on paternity leave.
Sure, yeah, there was, it was unanimously passed, so, you know, it was going to be a standard letter. We, you know, stay out of our business.
Right.
We can handle this ourselves.
Okay.
Or Jim wouldn't know it too if he got the other sign and just thought, well, took care of business.
Yeah, Jim, yeah. Yeah, I will check in on that and report back to you, Moleskine. Thank you.
So, so I, I agree that we should wait for Eric to return about that animal keeping ordinance. I, I am not sure that Munising Township mirrors Marquette Township for what we were really talking about is the urban residential Trowbridge Park area. I don't think Munising Township has that, but I don't know. Munising, the city of Munising is not within Munising Township, correct?
That's correct, yeah, the city proper is-
So, yeah, so, and I know there are lots of other ordinances out there and at this point, people have chickens and bees and rabbits, so we just need to, yeah. So I, I agree with Danny that we'll wait for Eric and I don't want roosters and I-
That's pretty much the common denominator.
Yeah, no roosters and, you know, six chickens are more than enough to feed a family of, with eggs.
Yeah, some of the other things that we had internally discussed is, you know, are they required to be in a pen? And then does that pen a structure and does that structure need to be setbacks?
Mm-hmm.
So it becomes more of a challenge in an urban environment because people have their sheds and their accessory structures and their garages and now there's another accessory structure with chickens and, or do we not, you know, consider that to be an accessory structure? So those are things that we probably need to do some more research on and, and yeah, we can work on that when he gets back. I don't think it's a pressing issue, I don't think.
No. And certainly Nagani, Ishburning and Harvey may have ordinances and they are closely connected to us and-
Yes.
The city of Marquette's a little bit bigger, but I don't want chickens in my yard from the neighbors, okay, just saying. For sure they'll eat my garden.
Is there, what's in, what's currently in the zoning plan now? And I don't remember if I read that this is current or if this is something that possibly they'd like to see about the beehives not being in the front yard?
Oh, we don't address bees at all.
Oh, okay, so that was something that I read because I noticed going down Grove Street that there are bees right out in the front, beehives right out in the front yard. Yeah, and they, they have, I think they have a little wire fence around it and it might be maybe an electric fence to keep out, you know, bears or whatever. But you can see, it's, they're nice hives, they're white and you can see them just as you're going down Grove Street at the bottom, you know, at the bottom of Grove Street, you know, almost in front of where the overpass track is, up to the right, the opposite of the racetrack.
Okay.
Isn't there a, isn't there a provision, apiary provision in our ordinance that's special use?
It could be under the agricultural language. I'm not positive.
I think, but it's by special use and not in rural residential.
Wouldn't apiary be a commercial land use though?
Oh, well, perhaps.
Right. Well, we'll have to look up the definition, but yeah, we'll, we'll fine tune that and get it back to you at some point when Eric returns. I'd prefer to do that with the wetland stuff too, just because we're heading into winter and most of the development is kind of, I do want to include information about this in the master plan update though, as it's progressing. And it has been progressing lately, so that's good. But yeah, I guess moving on to the other part of that, I need to familiarize myself more with what's being proposed, Danny's amendments, which I think on the surface are really good and definitive, which is helpful. And of course, any amendments that we make, we would send over to legal for review and make sure they're locked tight as far as constitutionality.
I think the main thing I wanted to do by providing this information was to, as you say, improve our definitions of wetlands. And on the document that I gave, under reference notes, those aren't meant to be part of the ordinance, those are just for your reference to show you that the definition of wetland can include a seasonal wetland, a fertile pool.
Or hydrosoil or plant types.
Yeah, you know, but because my property, if you come on my property now and you have an untreated eye, you wouldn't think it was a wetland. But it's been delineated as a wetland for at least 25 years and it's a seasonal wetland because from the first of November to at least the end of May, maybe part of June, it's a wetland and I've got salamanders and peepers and wetland trees and wetlands, you know, but it's seasonal, so that's why I proposed that. I just want to make a correction on the document that I gave you. So on page one, everything is good, except as I said, those reference notes are just for your, our reference, not to be included. And then on the second page, I incorrectly, I said amend site plan review in 1803A and 1803B, but as I looked at it again, and I was in a hurry when I did this, I think it should say amend article 1803. So that would be a correction. And then at the bottom, when it says amend article 20, number two, that, number two is all one sentence. There's no number three. So where it says, except where necessary for limited-
Crossing.
It should say limited crossings.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's my contribution, you know, to get this thing going anyway.
Right. I know that the provision even for waterfront setbacks is antiquated and that's something that we need to address too. So for instance, I think the old law is 75 feet from the ordinary high watermark on a lake property, but I think we should have something that addresses just water bodies in general, whether it's a creek, whether it's a river, whether it's a lake, whether it's a lakespier, there should be something that we can utilize there that's more relevant for today and it meets the needs of, of the community as well. So, yeah, we'll drill into that more as well.
Yeah, Eric was mentioning maybe in that section you just mentioned to include wetlands as a water body. I don't know whether that would work or not.
That, yeah, as long as we reference it, the definition of what a water body is, yeah, we could add that water body. And I just wrote that down, so thank you for that, that's great. We'll keep inching our way along.
Yeah, we'll keep unfinished business, unfinished business.
As by design.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to correspondence. You get that letter from Attorney Zappa?
Yep, so that one was delivered to you at your DAS and I did not put that in the package, it's public information, so that has attorney-client privilege and it's just an update on the one we were brought in.
Moving on to reports. Township Board Report.
So I was not at the last meeting, but I did ask if there was anything unusual other than what the agenda had and the person I asked say that there was not. So I would say the thing that I noted was that some of the departments are starting to work on their CIP planning and so we should be getting that sooner than later this time.
Earlier next month, yeah.
Yeah, so-
What's CIP?
Capital Improvement Projects are programmed.
So like Lanny will be looking at Lines Park and, you know, if there needs to be anything that needs to be purchased that would be without, not the norm kind of purchase things, but, yeah, so and Jason will be looking at his- things, but, um, yeah, so and Jason will be looking at his departments and the fire department has a long list usually of, um, wishes, I'll call them, and sometimes we have some in this building, some wishes and, so yeah, that's what we kind of fund.
My impression is, is that our review of the capital improvement documents is like playing poker with somebody, deals and then asks you to cut the cards, just cut the cards.
Yeah.
That's basically what we do with the capital improvement stuff is my opinion, I, I don't remember us making any significant changes or any of our requests being granted. In fact, one of our requests was denied last year.
Yeah, the board ultimately has say on budgeting, um, but you can make recommendations and, and, uh, we will get those to the board.
What did we ask for, Denny, that got denied? Maybe we can ask again.
We asked that the, uh, board set aside $10,000 a year for five years to, uh, fund a potential, uh.
Oh, a water.
Water station for the people that live out past, uh, Little Prescott Day Recreation Center, uh, and that would include about 60, 75 homes. And, uh, the reason, the reason I brought that up even, well, because I'm, I live in the woods and the climate's getting drier and there's already been one house burned out on, um, Harbor Lake Shore, Stepper Henke.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, but, um, that was in the capital improvement project, uh, uh, package from Lenny for three years prior that, oh yeah, this is needed, we needed, we needed some water source out there. So eventually I said, okay, fine, I'll, I'll make a recommendation, but when the board considered it, they didn't, they didn't go for it, so.
I, I think Lenny doesn't make, I, I think the fire department.
The fire department, I'm sure.
Makes that recommendation and maybe we should ask him to look at, I thought he was gonna look at what the options were for out there.
Well, I'm telling you, it was, it was on the, it was on.
They, they chose to not fund it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it was on there for three years before I even made the recommendation.
Yep, mhm, so, well, it doesn't hurt to ask again, you know, sometimes you have to ask lots of times.
You say they, but you're one of them.
No, I.
No, I'm one of them.
No, but I didn't.
Right, yeah, the board.
For the three years.
Yeah, right.
Prior to me.
I probably voted no.
That came in the package to us.
You're right, it did.
That's what I'm talking about.
You're right.
The recommendation made it to the board, it was part of the.
Right, I know it did.
It wasn't a new recommendation though, it's been in the board packet in previous years.
So then we took, we had a motion.
To move, yeah.
At the planning commission and voted unanimously to recommend to the township board that $10,000 be set aside for every year for five years so that there would be a fund at the end of five years to perhaps develop a water source for that area.
Yes, we understand that, Denny, and that was forwarded to the township board.
Oh yeah, I know that.
Yes.
I, I, I'm a.
Yeah.
The collection of data and the CI, pro, CIP program itself is a function of the planning commission, but that is a recommendation to the board who ultimately devises the budget. Um, so they have the final call and it, it's, it's a good exercise though for the planning commission and now that we've been doing it consistently, you're gonna find that there's gonna be very similar items on there because if they didn't get funded, they're gonna be back on there again.
So.
And we don't have, you know, we can make the same recommendation again if you'd like. Um, but, you know, we're not gonna really have anything from my department, I think we're pretty well set, maybe something for the rec committee, um, you know, pickleball being in the middle of a neighborhood has been obviously a challenge. Um, so we have, once the VA property's developed, uh, they have, uh, let us know that they would like to partner with us on some kind of amenities over there and so that might be an opportunity to work with a, you know, a federal granting agency, um, through the state. So, um, you'll, you'll see likely a lot of the same things from the fire department and public works, which is the, the meat and potatoes of a CIP program for most of us.
Well, let me retract my glyph comment about cutting cards because as I recall now, we did look at a lot of things that were presented, like lift pumps and so forth, and then we made comments in support of that. So I'm, I'm sure that maybe that support given by the planning commission may have helped the department heads when they went to the board for that money.
So hopefully, yeah, yeah, and hopefully we can get the department heads here, uh, to present or at least be available for any questions that you have for their portion of the CIP. So we'll try to schedule that for, um, early September.
And certainly, um, the planning commission is welcome, maybe encouraged would be a better word, to come to, um, the board sessions when we discuss the budget. I mean, you're a, the planning commission is an integral part of the township government, so I would encourage you to come. And maybe we can do it together and then those poor department heads wouldn't have to be like spending another day answering the same questions. Do ya think?
Um.
Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, we're compensated handsomely, I think that, that's part of your job, you only have to do it once a year and it, it gives, gives the department heads a good chance to take their own inventory on what they need and to be reminded of that and to remind and to, to advocate for those things, so I don't, I don't think the department heads really worry about having answered questions.
Copy, okay, yeah.
That's an opportunity for them to demonstrate, uh, the need and requirements that they have.
Good, so, okay, so however it works. So other than that, I didn't see anything else on this agenda that was, so hopefully you guys all watched the meeting.
Um, how about the?
Yeah, the rec committee's gonna meet for the first time in a while, uh, next Tuesday, uh, at 5:30 in the conference room and, uh, pickleball will be a source of discussion. Um, there were some changes made at the board level, excuse me, to the hours that pickleball will be allowed and we're gonna ask the rec committee, who has a couple of, uh, I would say intermediate pickleball players on it, um, you know, if they have any other suggestions that might help and I think that there, there will be some that will help there. So yeah, they'll be meeting and then, uh, I'm hoping to receive before next week, I'm not sure if I will or not, but, um, kind of a recreation section on the master plan to be able to give to them for their review and comments as well. Um, and then as far as planning and zoning goes, um, we've been busy with the, uh, reviewing the master plan update itself, uh, getting and distributing the CIP to the department heads and giving them a deadline on submitting that to me so that I can get it to you, uh, hopefully in the first meeting of September. And a lot of residential stuff going on that normally Eric would, would take care of that I'm dealing with now, so nothing major, but, um, uh, a new garage with a dwelling unit will be constructed in Bishop Woods on the piece that Max Millie owned, so it's not actually on or budding Bishop Woods Road, it's, it's, uh, an access easement that accesses that property in between Bishop Woods Road and County Road 492, just south of the Iron and Harry's Trail. And then a commercial fence next to the, um, the walk-in clinic on the east side, so kind of a wooden screening fence. And we did, are, are working on property maintenance adjacent, um, to, um, Mr. Hykenen's home on County, uh, Lake Enchament Road, which has run into a little bit of a, an issue just because there's multiple property owners that own that property, so, um, we've received bids on it and it's at legal for review and I'll hopefully meet with, uh, Manager Kengis on that with, along with Attorney Zappa before the end of the week, formulate a plan on addressing that. And all I need to do is check my email really, do the updates you want.
So while you're doing that, what, what happened toward the employee we were hiring to?
Uh, you have to ask Major Kengis and the supervisor on that, um, I, I, other than, maybe they thought it was over budget for now and didn't plan on it, I mean, they, we thought it was gonna be a seasonal position and then we were told that it was gonna be a, a consistent part-time person.
Oh.
Um, which would be great, actually, um, but yeah, we, we were just, sent the email saying that it wasn't gonna happen this year, so.
Hmm, there is still a lot of, uh, stuff in people's yards. Yeah, a lot of stuff.
Well, if you have specific properties, Commissioner Winslow, please.
I, I, we've done that, I mean, that you guys know where they are, I mean, they've taken care of some of it.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's really sad that people can't, um, move some of that stuff out of their yards, I guess, I guess that's the thing.
Are you?
Tree, cars that are not licensed, um, yeah, I could, I just, I guess I just thought we were gonna have somebody that was gonna help get that going for us.
Yeah, feel free to, uh, at your next board meeting to bring that up.
I'm, I guess I will.
Uh, I did talk to, uh, Civil Engineer Brian Savlon and he indicated, um, today that he'd be submitting a site plan for the proposed car wash where the Jasmine restaurant was, so that should be incoming. Um, we had some addressing questions that were sorted out, um, we are getting people coming in now, uh, based on fire department requests that are putting their addresses on buildings, so that's great. And then, yeah, Jim Johnson had a, um, a meeting on a town that he couldn't reschedule for, um, for a medical person, well, just a medical appointment, so that's why he's not here tonight.
That's, that's the gist of it.
Okay. Can I ask a question about the, um, the pickleball thing? Cause I was just curious, cause my family rented the pavilion this past weekend, her family reunion and a lot of compliments from people who haven't from out of town or that even live in the area but hadn't seen the improvements that have been done to Lions Field, where some people even say, I had no idea this was here, what a gem, this is beautiful. And the fact that the bathrooms are right through the pavilion, how convenient that was when we had two, when we had two 90-year-olds with walkers and how easy it was, you know, it was a very nice facility, but I was noticing the pickleball court set up on the tennis court, um, I, I had no, I had no idea how to play pickleball and what the size of stuff was, so I was kind of looking at it and I knew there had been some hoopla or what was going on. And so are they complaining that it's no, it's noisy?
Yes.
Is that the main complaint?
Yep.
And are the balls, are the balls hard or something? I mean, much harder than a tennis ball or?
Yeah, it's almost like, um, it's like a larger version of a ping pong, like ball. And so I think at the board level and at the request of the manager, there's some, there's some quieter balls that they'll use or that are being proposed to use that would be supplied by the township for that particular court, so, um, it's, it's to be determined, but that, that's the idea. They do make, um, uh, quieter paddles too, but we're not gonna buy everybody paddles and people are pretty specific about their paddles, it's like being a hockey player having the right stick in your hand, um, you don't wanna use somebody else's stick, you wanna use your own. And so I think from that perspective, uh, maybe the balls will be, uh, and maybe the hours being adjusted will help too. It's really only gonna affect them during certain times of the year, you know, June, July, when it's really, you know, light out till 10 o'clock and people still wanna be out there playing, but, you know, now they have to be done at nine, so.
Is there room enough between the, the ball field and that green space that's between the ball field and where that warm rain shed is? Is there room enough to put something, install something in between there? Cause that's a green space now, isn't it?
It is, yeah, I think initially on the master plan that was derived for that park, the, that green space was left as open space. There was a proposed like half-court basketball court right there.
Oh, okay.
Um, but that wasn't funded, so, you know, yeah, there's, there's other opportunities and I think we'll let the rec committee have a, a crack at it and then if they make any recommendations, obviously we'll follow the chain of command and come to the planning commission and then anything that's recommended here, we'll go to the board, but I think, you know, the board took some action to address the hours of operation and, and likely to amend the noise ordinance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know we don't have a road commissioner committee anymore, but, um, do we still have any contact with the county road commission as to certain issues?
Such as?
Okay, I'll tell you exactly, so as you're coming down from Target, uh, going away from Target and you come upon the Montessori School, there is a turn lane for Montessori School, but the stripe that delineates that turn lane has been worn down and you can't see three quarters of it. So what happens is cars coming down from, uh, Target use that turn lane as they're coming around that curb at 50 miles an hour. So it's a danger for people who go into that turn lane to turn left onto Wright Street, you know, to go to the Montessori School. And if, uh, the, by contrast, the turn lane paint for the turn lane to get onto Commerce Drive, uh, to come to our meeting here from Wright Street is always nice and bright painted, but it's been, it's been infringed upon so many times by cars coming down the other way up by there that it's, I think it's a safety issue, but I, you know, wondered why. I, I don't, I don't know if there's been any accidents there, maybe there have, and maybe it's just a, but I don't know why it's, it's, it's just, you know, it's not, it's not painted, it should be, that's one thing, that's all.
Yeah, I made a note and I will shoot an email off to the road commission and see, I know that they did some, they did some center striping, I don't know if they're coming back to do the, uh, the outside of the lanes, but I'll check in.
Thanks.
Any further public comment? Additional comments by the planning commissioners? Lee Anne shaking her head.
I have a public, or I have a commissioner's comment and a motion, uh, that I'd like to go through and it's probably gonna take me about six minutes, but I prepared a little outline for myself so my whole mind doesn't ramble too much and I'll be efficient.
Okay.
This, uh, comment concerns the denial by the township board on, uh, July 2nd, 2025 of the 10-year TIF for the Renovari project, which effectively kills that project. And, uh, I think good people make mistakes and I think five good people, uh, on our township board, which I admire because they do a great job, but five good people made a mistake by voting against that. Uh, there was, is what was five too. Uh, and I think sometimes mistakes can have adverse effect and I think this mistake could very well have a great adverse effect on the welfare of our, uh, township residents. Fortunately, I think this can be corrected and I think it can be corrected by asking the township board to reconsider their decision, number one, and number two, reverse the decision and grant the 10-year TIF. I will propose a motion and, and I'll get some comments as to why, why I'm doing this, but I will, at the end of this, propose a motion that our planning commission vote to submit a written request to the township board to reverse their decision or to reconsider their decision and to, um, grant the 10-year TIF. Of course, we have no. grant the ten-year TIF. Of course, we have no legal power over the township board, but for various reasons that I will discuss, I think it's, I think it's incumbent upon us to do that. So let me just continue here. I was out of town. I was out of state at the time of the July second, twenty twenty-five meeting. I was out of state at the time of the July tenth, twenty twenty-five township meeting, where people did ask, uh, officials from the county and, uh, elsewhere, uh, asked that this be, uh, reversed. So I missed both of those, but I did review the tapes. I reviewed the tapes of that meeting. And I also reviewed the tapes of the last township meeting where, uh, you said you didn't think anything came up, but it did come up, and it was just a brief, uh, comment by, uh, Mr. Kengas. I also reviewed earlier, uh, meetings between Renovari and the township board. So we know that in November of twenty twenty-two, our planning commission contacted Renovari to see if they'd be interested in developing attainable housing for that parcel by Shroom Park. On January twelfth, twenty twenty-three, Renovari sent a letter of intent to Jason describing what they wanted to do. And in that letter of intent, it was clear that this was a TIF. And getting back to the denial on July second of twenty twenty-five, the reasons given that were given, and not everyone who voted against it gave a reason, but the reasons that were given, and I'll quote from three of the of the commissioners. And again, I'm not attacking anybody personally here. I'm, I'm attacking the reasons that they made this decision and hopefully they can change their mind. But the reasons were, uh, we've been talking to residents who are dead-set against the TIF. Secondly, people don't like the TIF. I've been hearing from residents that they don't like the TIF. Well, these were the reasons that, the explanations the commissioners who voted against it, the trustees who were against this gave. But they never identified who they talked to. They never identified why these unidentified people were against the project. They never gave any, any indication that any of these people had any degree of expertise or that, uh, there was never any discussion as to any analysis by any of these unidentified people that they spoke to. Uh, the pros and cons, uh, cost benefit of a ten-year TIF to fund this project. And in fact, the, uh, trustees who voted against this didn't offer any, uh, cost benefit analysis or any reason other than we're against the TIF. So that was disturbing because from the very beginning, from, uh, as I said, in November of twenty twenty-two, our planning commission contacted through Jason, contacted Renovari. On January twelfth, twenty twenty-three, Renovari sent a letter of intent to Jason, and in that letter, which was then communicated to the township board, that this can only be financed by a TIF. Then, uh, in April of twenty twenty-three, the township, having considered that letter of intent with the notice that there would be a TIF, signed an option purchase agreement, agreed to an option purchase agreement. A couple of days later, there was an article, a nice article, a nice picture of John Kengas in the Mighty Journal. And Jason was quoted as supporting this, this project, as did John Kengas. And, uh, the article states that this, uh, would involve a TIF, tax increment finance. On April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, we resumed the property. We took the action, resumed the property from general business to downtown development. On April third, twenty twenty-four, the township board met with Renovari to discuss the financing. It was an extensive meeting. And Renovari presented, uh, very clearly that this would be a thirty-year TIF at the time and discussed all the ins and outs of it. Our planning commission then, in May of twenty twenty-four, had a work session with Renovari to discuss the costs, the sales and the financing, including the TIF, although we didn't have any power over that. It was discussed. Uh, we then did a pre-conceptual prelim PUD approval in July, and then in August of twenty twenty-four, we gave a final PUD approval. On March nineteenth of twenty twenty-five, uh, the township board again met with Renovari and this time Anne Giroux, who at that time was, uh, the chief person for the Marquette County Brownfield Authority. Uh, her and Jill Ferrari and, uh, her partner, I can't remember her name, Shannon, met with the township board. And they explained at that point in time, they had reduced the TIF from thirty years to twenty-four years. And of course, any time you reduce the TIF, the housing gets a little more expensive and less attainable. But nevertheless, they they presented a very comprehensive explanation as to what a TIF was. And at that point, thirteen of the units would be sold at a sale price of two hundred and twenty-four thousand. Twenty-seven of the units would be sold at a sale price of two hundred and forty thousand, and eight of the units would go at three fifty. At that meeting, uh, the chairman of the Downtown Development Authority, Mr. Zved, spoke in favor of the twenty-four-year TIF. And indicated that the Downtown Development Authority was unanimous in supporting that TIF. I also spoke at that meeting, supporting the, uh, project. Uh, Antonio Adon, who is the chief, uh, I guess we would call him the housing czar for the county, although I guess his title is the head of the land bank. He was hired by the county two years ago, three years ago, specifically to get attainable housing here. He spoke in favor of the, uh, twenty-four-year TIF. Anne Giroux, uh, said that at twenty-four years TIF, the, uh, Brownfield Authority would sacrifice one point two million dollars. And that Renovari would sacrifice six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and not get paid in full for reimbursement for that, for that amount. And when asked why the county, when Lynn Durant asked Anne Giroux why the county was willing to sacrifice a million too, she answered, because they believed that this would be a powerful investment for our community, for our township, and it was a big deal. At that time, it was noted that Beryl and Bean had a thirty-year TIF, which was approved by the township board. I don't know.
It's not thirty. It's not thirty.
Yes, it was. That's what the testimony was by Anne Giroux, but they expected it to be completed within thirteen or fourteen years because of the success of the business. They could pay it off sooner.
Oh.
Yeah. That, there was another TIF that the township had, uh, approved, the North Crest TIF. That was problematic because part of the property had never been developed, so that was gonna extend, that was a thirty-year TIF, and it was expected it would at least extend to the thirty years. At that time, Jill Ferrari noted that there were challenges on the site and that six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, was gonna be spent on foundations. And that the infrastructure alone for this project was gonna be two point six million dollars. And both Anne and Jill told the board at the time that they didn't see how this project could go without a TIF. So then we get to the meeting, um, on July second. Anne Giroux came again. She pointed out that this was a fifteen point eight million dollar project. And she pointed out that the county government was on board with it, that, uh, Lake Superior Community Partnership, uh, in the person of Christopher Germaine was on board with the twenty-four-year TIF. Oh, I'm sorry. At that point, the, I'm sorry, on July second, twenty twenty-five, that meeting, the TIF had been reduced to ten years because two commissioners, or two of the, uh, one of the, one of the trustees, and I can't remember who it was, uh, but Randy Retary at a prior meeting said he never supported a twenty-four-year TIF, so they reduced it to ten years. And Anne Giroux presented a very detailed written report, uh, and an oral, oral summation, which demonstrated that the lack of tax capture, the total lack of tax, tax capture to the township over this ten-year period would only be five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that the, uh, county share was, uh, seven hundred and eighty thousand, but that the fire millage for the township would continue. And at the end of ten years, the first year after the tenth year, the eleventh year, because the taxable value of that property, which has no taxable value now and has had no taxable value for the last twenty years, in the eleventh year, that would have, uh, a taxable value of seven million dollars. And the, the township would be able to collect seventy-four thousand dollars on that eleventh year. The, she also indicated that this was, uh, a beautiful program because we were getting one point three million dollars from MISTDA. So the township was gonna receive one point three million dollars from MISTDA, uh, and there were gonna be, uh, thirteen units that were gonna be restricted for incomes of people earning between thirty-five and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Uh, those thirteen units, that they would have also, those thirteen units would have, uh, down payment assistance. Those units would have a sale price of two hundred and forty thousand. Twenty-seven of the units would be, have a sale price of no more than two hundred and eighty-five thousand. And then eight units would have a sale price of three hundred and fifty-five thousand. So even though the affordability had become less because of the shirking of the TIF, twenty-seven units at two hundred and eighty-five thousand, I don't think that you can find any brand-new constructed eleven hundred or a thousand, uh, square-foot building, home that you can buy for two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So anyway, and the until the vote was taken, until the commissioners were asked, this was, it looked like it was a done deal. Randy Retary, who was voted in favor, but by the way, as did Linda, was already with a resolution to give to the county uh, the following week so that it would be a form, formal, uh, recognition that the TIF had been approved. But surprisingly and quite astoundingly, then, when the commissioners were asked to vote, only Linda and Randy voted in favor of it, and the other commissioners said they, they denied, they denied it because they're against the TIF. So it boggles the mind as to how, after, after so much dealing over, uh, you know, two years, two and a half years, continuing options to purchase and, uh, having a lot of work done by the, uh, by the Brownfield Authority and by Renovari, and a lot of discussions about TIFs and even the reduction from thirty to twenty-four and then to ten, that all of a sudden the, uh, the commissioner said, oh, we're denied because we don't want a TIF. So I don't really understand it, but nevertheless, it happened. Then, on the next board meeting, on July tenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, people appeared to ask the board to reconsider that and to reverse the decision. As I said, if I would have been in the state, I would have attempted that. I wasn't, but Stephanie Jones, the real estate broker, local real estate broker, Don Florio, a real estate broker also, uh, asked the board to reconsider and reverse their position, and one of them said that the, uh, housing situation here in our community is dire. That was Stephanie. Don Florio said, the need is desperate. Antonio Adon appeared again, uh, and asked the board to reverse their decision. And again, said that if you don't approve this ten-year TIF, we're gonna lose this one point three million dollars investment in our township of thirty-four hundred people. Is it thirty-eight hundred people, four thousand people?
Uh, forty-one oh five.
Forty-one oh five. We're gonna get one point three million dollars from the state. It's gonna be lost. Next to speak and ask the board to reverse it was Mitch Nordahl from Wildflower Construction in Uvani. He would, he would be the capital developer, the contractor, and the homeowner man, homeowner association manager for this project. And, uh, he hires all local contractors. He vouched that he could start building in April of twenty twenty-six and that his crew could build four to six houses per month. So, you know, presumably, uh, forty-eight, you could have this done in twelve, fifteen months. In addition, and this was new, that he was able to do it for the price, for the ten-year TIF and the price that he was gonna be compensated. And it's half garages, which weren't even included in the original, and in some cases, basements. Uh, he also made a comment that the land priced at a hundred thousand dollars an acre was quite expensive. And that perhaps the township could, should consider, uh, reducing the land price. And this echoes a prior comment made at the previous meeting by Antonio Adon. He suggested at one of the meetings with the township board that to make this happen, this was when it was a twenty-four-year TIF. He suggested that the township board should sell it to Renovari for one dollar because this was such a good project. And then both, uh, Mr. Nordahl and Adon had a conversation and agreed that the taxable value after these homes were built of this project would be seven million dollars and that that taxable value is more than the tax value of loans. Bob Zved then spoke from the Downtown Development Authority. Of course, he had previously supported this and he reiterated his support, even if it had been a twenty-four-year TIF. And then an individual from the community, from the township, Sherry Johnson, spoke. Uh, at the August sixth meeting, John Kengas, uh, mentioned less than a minute that, oh, you know, Renovari is disappointed, but they're gonna go through with the closing date of September first whether or not they have a, a MISTDA, uh, grant or not. Well, if there's no MISTDA grant, then what you're gonna get here is housing that is even less affordable than the twenty-seven units for two hundred and eighty-five and the thirteen units for, uh, two hundred and twenty, two hundred, uh, two hundred and forty. So what this is gonna turn out to be is just another housing project, something that completely forks the work that this commission has done for the last two and a half years, that Renovari has done, that the township has done, that the county has put into this, that the state has put into this. So it's, it bothers the mind. So what I wanna just talk about, in addition to the voices of MISTDA and of the state legislators, which said we had to put into our master plan that we were gonna make, we were gonna emphasize affordable housing. Uh, we had Invest UP, who was, who has supported this. In fact, at the second, at the last meeting where this was denied on July second, Anne Giroux- In fact, at the second, at the last meeting where this was denied, on July 2nd, Anne Giroux appeared as, she was cleaning up her prior duties to get this thing done, but she was at that point in time, a representative of Invest UP, Marquette County, through the Brownfield Land Bank. And then, again, of course, we have 81.7% of the people that were polled, of our township residents, that were polled in our master plan survey, said that encouraging development of a more affordable housing is an important goal. 58.4% of those people said it was very important, 23.3% said it was somewhat, but a total of 81.7% said it was very important. And then, of course, we have the township planning commission, the wonderful people that are sitting here today, who put a lot of time and energy into this and thought that this was going to be a, and I think, you know, I remember things that you say, believe it or not, I respect you and everything you've done. You refer to this as a legacy project for the township, that this would be, and your quotes in the newspaper are great too, but in the event. So what is the economic impact of this possible denial on our community? I did some research on M E T C construction projects, which was a larger project, but I extrapolated by dividing this job of 48 units, and I also consulted other internet sources in terms of per thousand square feet, how many laborers do you need and so forth. This job of 48 units, Renovari project, would have created between 60 and 90 direct and indirect jobs, it would have injected $13.8 million into our economy within two years. Supplying the workforce that our businesses need would allow our businesses to thrive and expand. It would infuse money into our lending institutions. You would have 6% plus, times 30 years, times 48 units. That's a lot of money invested into the financial sector here, which then they can lend out to other people, which then can make the community grow more. And then, of course, you have 48 new families, let's just assume it was only two people, that's 96 people, that'd be spending money here in our community. And then look at the, it's not bricks and mortar, it was going to be a stick program, a stick construction, but if you look at the solid stick, plaster, cement, assets, and you compare the construction costs, and I went back, and at one of our early meetings, I think it might have been the work session in May of 2024, Joe Ferrari provided us with a comparison of the sales prices versus the construction cost, and the construction cost, back in May of 2024, and I'm sure they're perhaps even increased, were $13,655,000. But the sales price at the July 2nd, 2025, combined sale price of all these units was $10,915,000, $915,000, $10,915,752, okay, so approximately $11 million. So if you look at the difference between $13 million and $10 million, this is a bargain of, we receive, we would be receiving $3,497,000 of housing stock for an investment of $580,000. I'm not an economist, but I'm not stupid either, that's a bargain. And, you know, what does a home last, 30, 40 years? So, and then after 10 years, you're going to start collecting taxes from it. I don't, I don't get it. But anyway, that's the economic impact, that's the detrimental impact that this negative vote will have. Of course, Linda, she's always been an advocate for this program, she talked about the social impact, about bringing new people and families into this community and growing this community as a vibrant community, improving our social fabric. And then you have the political impact. If this is, you think that MISHDA, or let's just say Marty Fatanti, let's just say we want to get a nice park, and we're going to apply for something from Marty Fatanti, and now Anne Giroux. Do you think these people are going to want to deal with us after we pull the rug out from under them, after they put all this work into it? I doubt it. So it's a mistake, but I've made a few mistakes in my life, and some serious ones, and I think, I haven't cured all of them, but this mistake can be cured, and the way it can be cured is, again, it may not be, but I think we have a duty to at least ask, please reconsider, please reverse your decision, please approve this 10-year TIF, so that we can do the right thing for our people in this community.
Is he going to make a motion? Or is he allowed to make a motion? Yes?
The motion would be to draft a memo to the township board on behalf of the planning commissioners sitting here tonight to do exactly that.
To reconsider?
Based on the social, economic, and...
Political.
And political impact.
Right. And I would further ask that that memo be delivered electronically or whatever you want to do tomorrow, so that they can get it on their agenda for their meeting on the 20th. That's my motion.
So I'll support that. I'm a huge supporter of doing what's right, not necessarily for people today, but the people who are going to live in our community tomorrow. If all we do is plan for today, then we're not planning for our future, and we wanted to plan for a future. And 45 housing units purchased, housing units, will help us plan for a future.
You can call the question, Bethany.
So do we make a, it doesn't have to be a call, it's just...
So, no, you'd say Denny motioned, Commissioner Winslow supported, all in favor?
Denny made the motion, Commissioner Winslow supported, all of us favor.
Aye.
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 Okay, 4-0.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Denny.
Well, we, we put a lot of work on this.
We do.
And we did it for a good reason.
That's a very, and I don't want to get too involved from staff perspective, but that's a very thorough analysis and powerful analysis of the impact, and some of the things that you don't think about, and what staff typically thinks about, but you caught on to, is the ability of staff to work with those agencies in the future down the road on other projects. And the reason I said it was a legacy project for the community is because it's a chance and a demonstration of leadership by example on how to do affordable housing. We reached out to them, the board's known for a long time what this project was, that it was going to be subsidized to the hills, but that there was an opportunity there. And a $1.3 million grant, you know, they don't just hand those out, it has to be, it's a competitive process and it has to be a good project, so. I will say that they're, they are bringing the project back again, I'm not going to stir the pot, or not stir the pot, but I'm not going to tip my hat as to how they're bringing it back, but they are going to have another crack, I believe, before the end of the month here, the second meeting of the board, which I may not be, I may be out of town. But I would highly suggest that you surmise those points that you just made and educate the township board on that specifically.
I'll be there.
Okay, well, I would, you know, just assume that you reiterate just what you did in the exact manner that you did, so that they are aware of, you know, we can only say so much and push so much, but ultimately, it's the board's decision. But I think that there's, you know, other, now the planning commission, but there's been others in the community too, that have reached out to say, you know. I will say, from a developer's perspective, it's something that we've been very good at over the years, is that developers expect certainty. They want to know that, hey, if I invest a half million dollars into this project, that I know if it gets through zoning, it should be good to go. Now, a project like this is a little bit outside of that box, but I think we demonstrated through the PUD process that it was something that could be done outside of the confines of conventional zoning, that it was an innovative project, and that's one of the tenants that the PUD review requires, that has been clearly demonstrated by the planning commission and related to the township board. So we have used subsidy in the past, and I think your explanation of the overall financial impact would be a very powerful statement in favor of the project as the planning commission sees it.
Well, maybe what I'll do is, if you can give me the video, I'll just clip it and I'll play it for them.
Yeah, I'm sure that could be available tomorrow through Clerk Retary.
Oh, hey, that would be great, because who knows, I'm old and you never know, I'm getting weaker every day, so.
I think it's powerful for someone to stand up and say exactly.
I'll be there.
Yeah.
Anybody else, of course, is...
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And I think, I don't think, I do not think people understand the process at all for a TIF. I don't think they know. I think they think it's coming out of their pocket. It's not.
Right.
They think they're going to have to pay. They do not. It's not, that's not what a TIF is, and, yeah, that's not what it is. And the city of Marquette is utilizing a TIF to do housing. I think there are lots of projects downstate utilizing TIFs to do projects, housing projects. So it's my five cents worth.
Well, I think we came to the end. Adjourn.
Yep.
Tonight's meeting.
Please.
As all adjourned, August 13th, meeting at 8:24.